Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Capitol City Council meeting. We leave at 6:00 o'clock. Could you please roll the roll?
Councilman III.
President.
Councilman Acosta.
President.
Councilman Figaro.
President.
Councilman Conseca.
President.
Councilman Zaire.
President.
Councilman Rivera.
President.
Councilman Solon.
President.
Boykorms. President.
Everyone, please rise and ready to meet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My wife is out. Yeah. Hey, guys.
Hello.
What are you doing?
Doing well, how about yourself?
Um, I'm doing.
They just took a couple comments a few...
No, I'm not talking.
Okay.
Let's stop talking. You got a little quiet. I'm going to lose voice. So today, you got me silent. I'll run it. I'm here, I'm here.
When you get this, first thing you're gonna see is that I am not a black man.
Thank you. How would you...
Yeah, my name's Alan. I'm on 303 Central Street. Well, this is... We've had a... Basically, what we have is the... If you look at the memorial in the bottom of the building, bottom of the page, okay, that right now sits at the library outside of the... Library, on the grounds of the library. It's a conference that... We talked about this, some of you probably heard it before. Some of you haven't. The whole idea of just this, okay, is to say, you know, we still would like to see, okay, and I say still, a huge bunch of vets that want to see this done, including people even outside of Central Falls.
Yes, considering.
But, um... This, we wanted to put into the Veterans' Memorial Park. If you flip the page, you get a better... You get a better look at, okay, what it does. The two cannons that we're looking at down there, that's obviously a separate project. And I took those pictures, but they're similar in terms of what... So that's what it would look like. Back in the front, in the front page, the granite column in the front is gonna house the plaque that's sitting over at the outside of the old Muppet and Church. And it was put up by the Sacred Heart Conference. And it was out there. And obviously, the flag is... So, the whole idea was to, when we decided to build this park, that this would... This is the right place for it, because basically, it is on the corner of Conne, Illinois. A lot of people get to see this, a lot of people, you know, obviously don't get to see it coming up Central Street. In fact, some of you probably haven't even noticed it as you drove by, okay? So, that's the reason I'm here, just to talk one last time about how to get this moved. And by the way, the cannons are the same cannons we're talking about that were sent out by the city to get refurbished and kind of coming back, okay? The Stand Down America has already agreed to move the monument. And Stand Down America is a veterans organization. They've already agreed to move the monument. Once we decide where we're gonna move it, they'll come in and move it. And the only cost of... Cost that's available, that's basically is... That we need for this is a model. They just bought a... The quote I thought was about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars. And then some work to this, they came to about two thousand dollars. And so, we... The vets would raise that money to get that one. That's all I can say here. And by the way, these are the words on the plaque, the last page of the words on the plaque that sits up in front of the old Muppet and Church on the office. One other thing that I wanted to talk about is that it's only an introduction on the Nuance House, the task force. Since I realize it was only a resolution that would build Nuance House task desk work on that, but I'm hoping what we see in the ordinance is the... Literally about the same thing. The reason I say that, when we put that together, even though it was, you know, even though it wasn't a formal ordinance, it... The process is the right process, because basically, there is documentation for everything. So, everybody understands what it is. In other words, and probably Matt knows this much better than I do, but the fact is, what we do, what we did in the Nuance Task Force when I was part of it was, you got a one chance, okay, to come in, right? First, you got a notification, you got a second chance where you had to show up. If you didn't do that, and all this is documented. It's all about police calls, fire calls, nuisance, you know, DPW problems, everything, okay? It's all code enforcement and everything else, and it's all documented. So, nobody can basically say they weren't informed, okay, or they're picking on you for whatever reason or other. And I hope the ordinance contains all of that. You know, I'm sure it does. And the other piece of it, I hope we can do business with, and maybe I should ask Peter this, but I hope we can do business with somebody like the Puckin organization that is trying to set this on owner-occupied, in terms of, once we take that property, I'd like to see that property go to owner-occupied. Basically, they do that. It's not a matter of single families either, by the way, it's just owner-occupied. So, that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeJ, you have a question?
Yes, Al. I assume this is just a draft? But the last page in memoriam?
Yeah.
My understanding of the plaque is that it just doesn't encompass World War II. It encompasses all veterans.
Yeah, I would like to see that changed, but that's verbatim off the plaque, okay? I have to go off the picture that I took to make sure I got the words right. But you're right about that, Tony. We shouldn't be able to change that to encompass everything.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing. I don't want to get into a big discussion, but that's come up before. First of all, when I was co-chairman of the... Monument that is built was fifteen thousand dollars, not one penny to the taxpayer of the city of Central Falls. That plaque, that monument, is for all those from Central Falls and Central Falls only that made the ultimate sacrifice for this country. That's what that's there for. Veterans Memorial Park is just what it says. It's for every veteran, living, given the ultimate sacrifice, and it encompasses everyone from every city and town in this country. That's the major difference. The plaque at the library, it's not a plaque, it's a monument. It's for all those from Central Falls only who made the ultimate sacrifice. That does not encompass every veteran. And if you ever move that, you better notify the 156 names, their families, that that is being moved. Physically, it cannot be moved without breaking it. That's the last, me personally, I'm gonna say about it. I think the time has come to put that to rest. That's gonna be a beautiful park, and that's a beautiful monument at the library. Let it be. Thank you.
Peter Friedrich.
Good evening, Councilman Peter Friedrich. The city's director of planning and economic development. Wanted to take this opportunity this evening to inform the public about a couple of upcoming meetings that my department is helping put on. The first is that tomorrow evening at 6:00 o'clock, the library and high school, we have a meeting about the proposed bicycle lane on Washington Street. So, if you want to find out some more information on that, you're welcome to come. And then, I have some flyers in the backup room here for a meeting we're having on Wednesday to a more broadly look at green and complete streets, streets that provide stormwater management and also provide an opportunity for all users to safely navigate the road. That meeting is on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and that will be a credit event, and that meeting will be... Both meetings will be conducted in English and Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Lorraine Savard.
This is Mrs. Lorraine Savard. Did you call me Miss?
I'm Miss.
Okay.
I'll call you Misses from now on, if you like.
That's all right. Lorraine Savard, 76th and Street, Central Falls. Two things today, and I will be back to others. First thing, I would like to see the city council meeting on TV. And how do I go about doing that? Question. It used to be a direct to one of the PBS or, I don't know, 14th Street.
Is that cable?
Yes. What happened?
I think it's supposedly a software problem at this time. Apparently, you can tell us about converting the meeting over to be cable-ready. I don't have any... I think Charlie has an update, hopefully.
Yes. We've been having some issues with our software, but that should be resolved, and all the meetings have been sent. They should be starting to show up in... On TV, starting from January, and it's usually on Saturday mornings.
Years prior... They're on disc, if you're interested.
Yeah.
Prior years.
Yes. All right. And they're also on our YouTube page. They've always been there.
I'm so computer illiterate.
I am. I'll show you how to get it if you'd like.
Oh, thank you. Okay. And the second thing is, I was at the State House last week, the week before, and I spoke to the director of the energy, the Office of Energy, something, Gold. And I asked her how I would go about setting up seminars for solar energy, for people like me, who have... I don't own... I don't own... I'm married, and I have my husband, and he knows this, but for single women who own homes, who have a good vague idea about solar, you know, and what it involves and different ways. And I asked the woman how I would go about, or go about setting up seminars, and she told me that the city council, the city government must ask for that. So, I am asking someone on the council, mayor or the president, to contact, let me think, it's the Department of Energy, something. You must know, CIVS, Mary Gold, used to be at, what is the name of that?
Office of Energy Resources.
Yes. And called her, and she told her, "How about the sun?" And I say even high school kids might want to know about that, maybe by multiple classes. That's all.
In all honesty, if you get a regular phone, up until a few weeks ago, they were calling me almost every... And there is a solar company that's been calling this area for the last three months, at least three times a week.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about basics, you know?
Well, I'm sure they could provide it. They're the company that puts it in, so... But you can go through the energy, but I'm surprised you haven't got phone calls. I don't know if anyone else has, but they were calling me like two or three, four times a week. I basically told them I'm not interested, but they still called.
The Office of Energy Resources says there is a system, there is a seminar that you just called in, they'll come?
I'm sure the company would come through. They're gonna try to...
Oh, the company is...
They're gonna try to sell their product. I'm surprised you haven't got a phone call.
No.
No, it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Elizabeth P. Piers?
Oh. I'm coming because two weeks ago, two Tuesdays ago, the police went into my house. They had my boyfriend outside on the floor, and my kids were in the house by themselves, including my seventeen-year-old daughter. They had something pointed to her face. She said she didn't know what it was. They were looking for somebody, and they didn't go in her room to search, they didn't go in my bathroom. They went into all four, three of the four apartments in our house, looking for somebody. They didn't look into the basement. They had guns pointed at my ten-year-old stepdaughter's face, for no reason. And we... I filed something with them, and they called my fiancee to take my daughter tomorrow and speak to them.
What's your address?
101 Main Street.
Main Street?
Yeah. My door was open, they broke my door.
They broke your door?
Yeah. And he kept some... He kept some on the right side, because the kids are by themselves. They weren't letting him get off the door.
Are you on the other side, North, right eastern side, or Dexter?
On the one side. One-way side.
Closer to the hatch.
Yeah.
You're on the one-way side?
Yeah. Like three houses up from Dexter.
And you informed the police department? You filed a complaint?
Yeah, we... Everybody filed complaints.
Did you get a copy of the arrest?
Nobody was arrested.
Okay, did you file a complaint for damage on your property?
It's not I wrecked. My neighbor's supposed to take care of that, but I have pictures of the damage that gave it to my door.
Did you have any other damage to your property?
Nothing else.
Except pointing a gun at your daughter?
Yeah. And now, my stepdaughter's scared of him, so...
I would suggest you contact the police chief to meet with him to discuss.
I think that's who we're meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Do you know what else I have to go to comment?
Okay, at this time, I would like... We have a gentleman from the Senate or...
Secretary.
Secretary of State's office. He wants to speak on Resolution 6F regarding the early voting. So, I'm gonna ask permission of the city council to move him up to now. I guess he's got previous engagement.
I'll read you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's a resolution in support of 2007 House Bill 5700 and 2007 Senate Bill 0619, and it's entitled "An Act Relating to Elections: Emphasizing I Would Vote in," and is sponsored by Councilman Acosta.
Any objection to the gentleman? Please speak for us.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Rob Rock. I live at 400 Door Avenue, East Providence. For the record, I am the Director of Elections for Secretary of State Nelly Gorbaya, and I'm here before you to talk about the resolution that's before you, sponsored by Councilman Acosta, which we appreciate, Councilman, thank you, regarding early voting. And I just quickly want to talk about the current process and then the process we've outlined in our bill. Currently, voters are able to, on the 20th day before the election and up until the day before the election, come into Central Falls City Hall and cast what's called an emergency mail ballot, where they have to fill out an application, which then needs to be entered into the computer by the Board of Cameramen's office. The voter is then given a ballot, where they vote the ballot. It goes into an envelope, which is signed by the voter and witnessed by the Board of Cameramen staff in Central Falls, and then must be hand-delivered to the Board of Elections before Election Day in order for their vote to count. So, as you can see, it's a pretty labor-intensive process with a lot of data entry and signatures and things of that sort. And we feel like the process that's currently in place is not adequate. And so, we've proposed a different early voting bill that would essentially allow voters to come into Central Falls City Hall 20 days before an election and up until the day before the election, cast a ballot, but it would go into a voting machine. So, a voter would come into Central Falls, they would show their ID, they'd be checked in on an electronic poll book, which literally takes 10 seconds to check in to vote. They will be given a ballot, they will vote the ballot, and they will slide the ballot into a voting machine, right there and then on the spot. No signatures, no data entry, no delivering to the Board of Elections. The voter gets to vote right here at City Hall, it goes right into the machine, and they can go on their merry way. We believe that this bill, again, streamlines the process for voters, for local election officials, and for state election officials. And there are numerous benefits to the bill. First off, the way that we live our lives today is not conducive to the way we vote, right? So, every other year, on Tuesday in November, for 13 hours, you can go to your polling place and cast a ballot. Well, that's not the way we live our lives anymore. We have two and three jobs, we have kids, we're busy. It's not outlandish to think that someone cannot make it to the polls on Election Day because they're too busy. So, we want to open the opportunity for people to vote a little bit easier. We feel that convenience voting is very important. One of the other stipulations in the bill is that we want to allow for weekend voting. So, on the weekend before the election, City Hall would be open from 12 to 4 on the Saturday and 12 to 4 on the Sunday for people to come in and vote. And we feel that's important, because a lot of people are unable to get to City Hall during normal business hours during the week because of work and other engagements. So, we feel that the weekend voting before the election is very important. We also feel that it's gonna be a quicker process for voters. As I outlined in my testimony previously, it's gonna be a lot easier for voters to walk in, check in, cast a ballot, and slide it through the machine, as opposed to filling out an application, signing documents, and having it be delivered to the Board of Elections by the Board of Cameramen's office. And I feel one of the most important reasons for early voting is voter confidence. While I can guarantee you that every ballot that's voted here at Central Falls is counted at the Board of Elections, it's delivered and counted as it should be, but I think the fact that a voter can witness the ballot going into a machine and indicate that the... On the screen, it says, "Thank you for voting, your vote has been counted." The counter on the machine increases by one as soon as that ballot goes in. I think that exudes the confidence to the voter, as opposed to it going into an envelope, being left with the clerk's office, and then needing to be delivered. Again, I can guarantee you that they were delivered, and that voters don't have to worry about their votes being counted, but I think seeing it go into the machine, it offers more confidence in the process. As I also mentioned, it's less work for the paperwork for the Board of Cameramen's and less time, so the staff can be doing other things. It also eases the burden on Election Day. So, with more and more people casting a ballot before Election Day, less lines at the polling place, less wear and tear on the machines. In 2016, 15,000 people voted during the emergency mail ballot. That's up from 5,600 in 2012. So, almost triple the amount of people voted early in 2016 than they did in 2012. Here in Central Falls, 340 people voted during the emergency mail ballot period, which equates to about 42 people per polling place. So, you've got eight polling places here in Central Falls, 42 less people per polling place showed up to vote, which shortened the lines on Election Day. Not only is it a trend in Rhode Island where more people are voting early, but it's a trend nationally. Thirty-three states plus the District of Columbia have some sort of early voting, and as many as 40% of the people in 2016 actually cast a ballot before Election Day. Forty percent, that's a pretty high number. The final thing that I'll mention is that we have worked very hard on this bill to make it a collaboration between election officials. So, we just received the endorsement from the City and Town Clerks Association on the bill after numerous discussions, and we thank, you know, Sonia for her part in that as well. We also have agreement with the Board of Elections, too, on our bill. So, our office, the Board of Elections, and the City and Town Clerks Association all supports this bill. Secretary Gorbaya also formed a task force after the 2016 election to review what happened in 2016 to see what we can do better and what worked. We actually were fortunate to have your city clerk, Sonia Grace, as part of that committee. Secretary Gorbaya felt that Sonia exudes that civic leadership on elections, and we asked Sonia to be on that committee, and we appreciate her input, Albertos as well. And we... And one of the recommendations on that task force was to implement early voting. So, it's something that has widely been talked about and agreed upon by the election stakeholders. I believe the mayor of Central Falls supports the initiative, and we appreciate the council support as we move forward. We had a good hearing last week in the Senate on the bill, and we're hoping that this bill's gonna pass to make things better for voters and for election officials. So, we would appreciate the Central Falls City Council's support on this resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Tom, may I?
Yes, this proposition, which is sound good to me, that will include the mailing ballot for the senior who can go to the voting place and all. So, the same way that we used to do before, that they fill out an application, receive the mail in the house, and fill out and send it back, that will include that?
Absolutely. So, this does not affect the mail ballots that get sent to voters to their houses? That does not affect that whatsoever?
Thank you.
I have... I think I go a step further. You mentioned, and you're correct, SAD, for example, something for the State House to consider. Presently in the state of Rhode Island, I believe it's the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Why not make it the first SAD after the first Monday? Actually, make Saturday an Election Day. And I've got something for the national. Why not make every four years Presidential Day? Why don't we make that a holiday every four years? No excuse for people. Saturday for locals and a holiday for nationals every four years. Now, I may have a question for Matt. Could we actually do an ordinance just for the city of Central Falls, that we make Saturday Election Day? Or does that bypass the state? For local election or... Just curious. That's a whole other issue. I believe local election should be on ideas, therefore, people can concentrate on local elections rather than, you know, from president on down, by the time you get to a council or school committee, names are pretty much forgotten. Just that's been on my mind for another year.
Certainly, we can certainly discuss.
If you really think about SAD for a state election, I think would be fun. Anyone else? Actually, Tom should know about the absentee ballot. He was involved in a one-vote election, so he can tell you how back and forth that election went.
Very true. Yes, I'm familiar with absentee ballots. I have a... I do have a couple of questions. Is there any financial benefit to the cities and towns or reimbursement for opening up on Saturday and Sundays?
Well, so, we... The way the bill's written is that we realize that every city and town is different, and so the bill allows the cities and towns to kind of work with the Board of Elections on determining how to go about implementing the early voting. I can tell you that as part of the bill also is a task force that is going to assist the Board of Elections in developing rules and regulations, which I think goes to the budget piece of it and how that needs to be staffed and so forth. I can tell you that I was in the town of Westerly a few weeks ago, and their elections office indicated to their council, to her council, that if this bill doesn't pass, her budget's gonna be higher than if it does pass, because she sees the way that running in Westerly, it's gonna save money. I can't speak to why that is, just the way she sees it running, that she feels it would save money. So, I think it's gonna be up to the town on its implementation about the actual cost of it. But I can tell you that with the discussions with the Clerks Association, we had originally indicated that we wanted the two weekends before the election to be open, and we compromised with the Clerks Association to only have one, because one of the concerns was the budget. But I do believe that...
So, there's only one weekend before, not every?
That's correct. It's just a one weekend before the election. Actually, back when this bill was first introduced a couple of years ago, we had the three weekends before the election, and it's now down to the weekend before. So, it's only the 12 to 4 on the Saturday and Sunday before Election Day.
Okay, and no financial reimbursements at this point?
Right, so there's not any in the bill? I know there have been discussions about potentially offering some sort of financial burdens, but I can tell you from some of the things that I'm hearing from the towns is that it's gonna be cheaper to do this. I can't say across the board that's gonna be the case, but the way some of the towns envision it working, that it would be cheaper.
Twenty days before, up until the day before? So, the absentee ballots are the same, mail ballots would be the same. What about provisional ballots on the day of the election?
That would remain the same. So, the... You have... If you want to apply for a mail ballot sent to your house, you've gotta do so by at least 21 days before the election. That's still the case. Starting on the next day, which is the 20th day before the election, is when the early voting would start, and would go up until Election Day. And then, on Election Day, if you were to show up and cast a... Show up and for some reason, your name's not on the voter rolls, you would cast a provisional ballot. That does not change with this bill.
With the passage of this bill, when would this commence? And would this cover both local and state and federal elections?
So, I believe the bill says it would go into effect July 1st, 2018, and it would be for all... It would be for all elections.
2018.
Correct. So, the first election where this would be in place would be the September primary in 2018.
Do you have a plan in place for educating our constituents about early voting?
Absolutely. And we... So, in this past year was the first year that the Board of Elections had indicated that you can vote during the emergency mail ballot for no reason. You don't need to give a reason. You used to have to give a reason. You didn't anymore. And so, as part of our handbook that we send to every single household in the state, there was a big ad about coming to City Hall and casting a ballot early, and that's why we think, not just because of the work that we did, but the work that the locals did and others, we feel that the reason why it almost tripled this year was because the word got out about casting a ballot early. So I can guarantee you that our press team will be advertising this so that people know about it.
The process of voting on these early days would be the same process of going to vote on Election Day. You would have to check in, show identification, sign, certification, have it witnessed, and then vote.
Except for the witness piece. So you're going to check in on an electronic poll vote, which is an iPad. You'd sign the iPad to be sure that you are who you say you are, it matches the address, and then you'll be given a ballot, just like you would on Election Day. So it's the same exact process, except the poll workers are going to be election officials in your City Hall or however the city would like to staff it.
So there will be visual of individuals there reviewing that?
Correct.
You're not doing it just on the computer? Is there any form of voting online in the future?
I know there's talk about it nationally, but numerous folks that are more tech savvy than me, which is pretty much everybody, says that we're still a ways away from online voting. And the problem is capturing a signature. And of course, there's the integrity issue too, the safety and security of it, but it's certainly not something that I can see happening in the near future at all.
My only other question is not the voting, it's the registering. At this time, you could register at the registrar, you could register by somebody just signing a paper. There were no verifications on simple registrations. That needs to be done in person at City Hall or with an election official? Is there any discussions about the integrity of voters?
Yeah, well, so there are checks in place when people register, and also you can also register online now. And the reason why you can register online is that we do have your signature, as long as you have a record with the DMV, you can register to vote online. But when someone registers to vote, they are supposed to give their driver's license or the last word of their social, which is invalidated to be sure that it's accurate. Also, a piece of mail is sent to the individual after they register to be sure that the address they've given is accurate. And if it's not, it's returned undeliverable to the city, and that voter is made inactive and must prove where they live on Election Day if they go to vote. So there are checks and balances in place when people register.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none?
I move to approve the resolutions.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, second by Councilwoman Solano to approve the resolution that was just very nicely presented before us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, nays, hearing none, seeing none, ayes have it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to move Bob Batty. Bob's stuff is getting full. So I'd like to move, I guess it's item seven to eight. One and two. And yes, seven, eight, one and two. We're going to move you up. I know you've got a special supper waiting for you tonight, and it's in the microwave. Has everyone looked at the abatements and the reasons of why they've been?
Good evening, Councilman Bob Batty, Tax Assessor. Again, I'm here regarding two sets of abatements that are before you, that should have been in your package. I'm sure there were. One's essentially from my office, which is a small tangible abatement for a cab company that was out of business and was originally sent a tax bill. That is the Royal Cablon. Then there are five others, abatements that are recommended or ask for your approval from the Appeals. It's obviously from, obviously from people who were not satisfied with the result that they got from me. Once to the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals is recommending to you DMX following abatements. Those are the ones, obviously, that are on the Board of Appeals. Pretty much answer any questions you may have regarding any of the requests for abatements.
I have a quick one. Royal Cab's out of business?
Yeah, Royal Cab is, I mean, Royal Cab, yeah.
That's on the corner across, and those are...
Well, there is another cab company there.
There, yeah, there is. I was going to say, yeah. I didn't know they'd switch names.
They did, while they were two entities at one time, and Royal Cab was one of those. Royal Cab is down a lot of business.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the abatement for Royal Cab.
May I move to approve? Yeah, I'd like to do them collectively if possible, but that's the only abatement you have.
That's the only one I have, is from the 10.
Okay, so we can do that, but that's the, I'll make a motion to approve the assesses' abatement. By Tom, who's there, we have a second by Councilwoman Fonseca. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, nays, ayes have it. And then next is the Board of Appeal abatements. So we have a motion. Everyone look at the Board of Appeal abatements of the individuals. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Fonseca to approve, seconded by Councilwoman Barrett. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, nays, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Moving back up to item four. A is consideration of meeting minutes for a break attempt 2017. I move to approve the...
We have a motion by, we have a motion, Councilwoman Fonseca. Second, second by Councilwoman Solano and Councilwoman Figueroa. Under discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move, as I have in the past, I will renew my concern regarding the minutes and the way they are presented. I move to amend them. I'll go through them list by list if you'd like. I have amended to the motion.
What would you like to amend?
As I've said in the past, Mr. Chairman, when we have minutes, the minute should reflect the action and the discussions that take place at the meeting. I feel that these minutes reflect that, and I cannot support them. I move to amend the minutes to reflect the discussion by the council, such as Councilwoman Lazar objected to the minutes asked that they be tabled. The motion was seconded, and it failed on a one to six vote. Motion approved me. I also motion to that the form was amended and that other comments were made which are not reflected in the minutes. Further on in the minutes, I can go on each item. The discussions by the City Council are not reflected in the minutes. I wish to have the discussions of the City Council included in the minutes. When it comes to questions by the City Council, the only thing that is added to the minutes is that the City Council asks questions. It does not reflect what those questions were or to whom. They should. When individuals ask questions, those individuals are in the minutes. Some of their comments are included, such as the comments by, under the public comments or comments at other actions before the council. These are not reflected when it comes to the City Council, and they should.
Tom, I don't want to interrupt you, but you're just generally throwing things out. You want to make an amendment, we need a specific line and a specific word. You can't just re, you're basically rehashing the meeting.
I'm going to continue, Mr. Chairman, because I don't...
But that's not an amendment.
Sorry, the amendment for us is that my question's...
You're rehashing the meeting, you don't have a specific word or a specific error of the actual minutes that are in front of you. You did this before. You've got to be a little more specific.
On the second page, Mr. Chairman, under Executive Communications, the minutes reflect Department Financial Records, Finance Department. Cynthia D. Jesus, Director of Finance Department, answered questions from the council. I wish to amend that to include which council members asked questions of what and what were the answers, Mr. Chairman.
Here again, you're adding something that's not there.
Because it should be there, Mr. Counsel.
I assume an amendment is word in front of you. You've amended something that's in front of you, you're adding on.
Yes, that's what amendment is, Mr. Chairman. I'm adding which was not...
That's not the definition of amendment. But again, we're wasting time on this. We went through this last two meetings, and again, that camera records everything that's being said here tonight and that has...
I wish the clerk would record everything that's written and said, Mr. Chairman. And that's why I'm objecting in asking that the minutes reflect the discussion of the council, what, who asked what, what was asked, and what were the answers.
I don't think you're being fair to the clerk. I think the minutes are excellent, they reflect everything that was done at the meeting. And again, the camera reflects everything, it's there.
The official records of the...
We have a motion on the floor regarding minutes. If you want to vote against the motion, that's fine.
I have a motion to amend.
If you want to amend, if you have a second to amend, Mr. Lazar's motion. The amendment fails.
I have another amendment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on the D, I'll take for example Section 6.
What is your amendment, Mr. Lazar? You want to amend the whole section?
I'm reviewing that with you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to amend Section 6, Schedule of Bills. E, Resolution in Support of Application of Ride. Superintendent gave a presentation highlighting the needs of the schools and how the application of ride would assist the city achieving its goals. In further states at the council, answered questions from the council. Those questions were important questions, Mr. Chairman. They are not elaborated on here. I wish to have them included. I asked pertinent questions and financial questions of the superintendent in the EBTB. Those are not included in the minutes. I move to have those comments included in the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
That's your amendment. We have a second. Hearing none, seeing none?
Next, Mr. Chairman, New Business, Section 7. Fiscal Year 2016 Financial Audit Review by James Prescott. It states that Councilman Luke Thomas Lazar raised objection to the process of the audit because he did not have time to review. What I did, Mr. Chairman, also, which is not reflected in the minutes, is I requested a period to ask questions of the auditor to question the audit finding and review. That's not reflected in the minutes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morganis addressed the council and Councilman Lazar's objection by stating that the order was made available to all council members on Friday, March 17. It was not available to me then, but I was not available, and it was not sent to me. But what took place after that, Mr. Chairman, is that the right of the council to question or to ask questions of the auditor was denied at the time, and that is not reflected in the minutes, and I wish to have that reflected in the minutes. I make that a motion to amend.
We have a motion. Do you have a second? Motion, you amend it, I...
There's still more than five minutes of this stuff.
As part of the discussion and keeping to our norms, not getting personal, I push the councilmen, seeing as we're all here as public servants and trying to serve the public good, in what way would changing minutes to look more like a transcription do the public a good?
I'm very happy to answer that, Mr. Councilman. The City Council minutes are a very integral part of the history of the action of this council. As a former City Council City Clerk for over 12 years, certified as a City Clerk and municipal clerk, the taking of the minutes is more than just the motion and the actual vote. It is the discussion and the intent that the council acts on. If the council discusses an item and the intent of that item is to question a certain action, then as years go by, when reviewing the intent of that law, you go back to listen to the discussion of what the council's intent was. The intent questioned this item or that item. That intent is part of the record. It shows to the reader in that the law that was passed had an allowance to question. The law did not go beyond a certain degree, or it questioned some future actions. That is the intent, and that is the reason why discussions are not just a nice thing to have, it's a requirement to have for posterity. The official record is the record that the clerk takes, not just the video, it's the written record. I contend that these minutes and the minutes that have been taken since I've been on this council are not accurately portraying the actions and the discussions that take place at this meeting. When it comes to discussions by the council, there are line items that the council questioned a certain individual. Which council is not involved? What questions were asked? What answers were given? None of that's included. It should be part of the record before a final vote. That's the reason that I bring it up tonight, and the reason that I bring it up at the last two, three, four meetings, and the reason I'll bring it up until I feel that the minutes accurately portray the discussion and reflect the actual vote. What is the actual vote on these motions? It reflects 7-0, 6-1, 1-6. Who voted? Who voted for? Who voted against? It's not reflected in these minutes. It's wrong. Your vote should be tallied. Your vote should be included if you voted in favor of something or if you voted against something. That's what the record is supposed to show. I am not trying to nitpick, but as a former City Clerk, I take taking the minutes seriously. That's why I object when I review the minutes and that they do not reflect the discussions and the actions at the meeting. So I apologize that I'm taking time, but this is not, this is not my original intent. I'm trying to get this stringing down where I feel comfortable, I'm voting for these. I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I... With that, can we get a chance, go online and look at the minutes of the meeting of, well, any Blackstone Valley community, Lincoln, Southern.
Mr. Chairman.
Any community. And I'm willing to say that the minutes we're getting from our clerk is either far beyond theirs or at least equal. Do yourself a favor. I've done it. I've been at meetings. Go online and see their minutes of previous meetings, and you tell me if they're any better than ours. Ours is either better or equal. With that, all those in favor to approve the minutes of last meeting signify by saying aye. Do you have votes aye?
No.
One aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes. I've taken minutes for over 40 years at meetings.
Can I ask something? Can we have 7B? Can we move up 7B, please, so that businesses can get access to their businesses? 7B is City Council Sitting as Board of License Commissioners. 71 is Consideration of Business Licenses. We have two renewals, Sidewalk Cafe for Darling Sidewalk Cafe and Macassona. Darling Sidewalk Cafe 623 Dexter Street, Macassona 760 Broad Street. Then you have a new restaurant license for Super Ice Cream, and then the one for Sidewalk Cafe.
I believe that the first two are renewals.
Correct.
Would you pledge your lot of renewals?
Do you do those collectively?
You can do the renewals collectively.
I move to approve the two sidewalk cafe renewals for Darling Sidewalk Cafe and Macassona.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Councilwoman Fonteza, Secretary of the Councilman Swallow, and Councilman Figueroa to approve the two renewals sidewalk cafes. Darling Sidewalk Cafe and Macassona. Any discussion on renewals?
Mr. Chairman, I ask the solicitor. This is a, the sidewalk ordinance is something new that I wasn't familiar with in the past. I would ask the solicitor to give me an an opinion on the sidewalk cafe licenses and the standards and the permit required. I find some discrepancies of either approving or how the sidewalk permits are allowed on if it is a sidewalk or if it is adjacent, if it is permanent, if it is movable, if it comes down at night. I would ask to review that with the solicitor right now. I believe it's Article 8, Chapter 32, Article 8 Sidewalk Cafe Licenses. I don't have the ordinances in front of me. I refer that to you.
It's Article 8, Chapter 32, Councilman. Did you have a question?
Yes.
What was the question?
The standards, Section 32-303. Could you review that with the council?
Section 32-303. Section A, Cafe shall be permitted only in a judge's business. Section of the city. Section B, no part of a sidewalk cafe shall encroach upon the right way or sidewalk frontage. We've gone over this issue before. The ADA requires at least a three-foot passageway for
Four foot?
Passersby.
Is it a four foot?
The ordinance requires four foot, and Section C, the ADA requires three foot. Section D, in the case of a business owner, so if a business has a side yard setback, parking lot, the sidewalk cafe may not just be on the sidewalk, but it could also be on the side yard, parking lot, etc. Section A, Insurance and Indemnification. Section F, the materials for the sidewalk cafe have to be removed no later than 11:00 P.M. And all of the furniture to remove by midnight. Alcoholic beverages must be approved by the Board of License Commissioners for the sidewalk cafe. The Section H, you cannot put food, have outdoor entertainment at the cafe location without approval of the council. And finally, Section I, the cafe must comply with all local building health safety by zoning and environmental standards.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I, each of these establishments, I have reviewed them. I'm relying on the the city, the solicitor office, the clerk, the zoning, that these licenses comply with those requirements. I know we were in discussions, which is not these two, I believe, another one, which is on the sidewalk or on the street.
That's going to be tabled by the
Okay, but on these, I do not know if they are on the particular sidewalk, which I didn't think it was, but I'm not sure. I don't know how much space they take, or if they are taking it at night, or if they do comply with zoning and everything else.
Have you been, Macassona's been doing this for a number of years. Have you been by where they're set up? They're not even close to the sidewalk.
I only familiar with them in the parking lot, Mr. Chairman, not on the sidewalk.
They don't, they're not actually on the sidewalk.
Council President, but if, before everything goes into our package, it's vetted. So zoning does their job.
The bottom line is that they've been doing this for a number of years, and they have complied.
They're in compliance with this, Mr. Chairman.
As far as I know, they've not changed anything.
I'm only questioning if they're I'm not familiar with this new ordinance, so I reviewed it, and I found some questions that I had to raise. I'm not sure.
Get a chance, go by and see. They're well off the sidewalk. I know it's a term, sidewalk cafe, but they're not even on the sidewalk.
If they are in compliance, Mr. Chairman, I would take your word for it.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Do you have votes aye, nays, ayes, ahs?
The next license is Super Ice Cream.
Hi, good evening. Could you state your name and address?
My name is Gendarima, 112 James Avenue, Central Port.
I have a question up front. Where do you want to, this super ice cream, is this going to be by vehicle?
This is ice cream truck.
It's going to be a truck. Okay, if you read this, it looks like you want to run it out of 112, James Ave. That's your address. Okay, it is ice cream truck, seven days. The only thing, I don't know if you understand, you, that you cannot operate after 8:30 P.M. An ice cream truck, and they have, they have till 10:00 P.M. on here.
I didn't know the hours.
Yeah, yeah, an ice cream truck can only go till 8:30 P.M. But I looked at the application close. I was confused. I didn't, I didn't know where it was going to be, and then I saw the little print where it's an ice cream truck, and then I saw 10:00 P.M., I guess. It's the only question I have, is ice cream trucks have to stop at 8:30?
That's okay.
Yep, thank you. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman. I would only ask the clerk to question her if that is to correct the license. Class A is for a restaurant. I'm not familiar that a truck is usually a different classification.
The Class A allows for two trucks.
Under Class A?
Correct.
Okay.
So the truck won't be moving, correct? It'll be stationed there in front of your house?
No, it's going to be moving. That truck
Well, actually, it's going to be parked in the house.
But you're not going to sell out of, out of the yard. You're going to be moving. It's a moving truck. You've got the bell, the lights, the whole night.
The music.
Yeah, that's the only, the only flair I saw was at 10:00 P.M. to stop any spirit. And then 112 is listed as a business address. You certainly can't operate on the house. Anyone else? Do you have a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Figueroa. We have Madam Clerk, please, amend that kind of a We have a second by Councilwoman Fonteza and Councilwoman Rivera. Any further discussion? Best of luck, by the way. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Do you have votes aye, nays, ayes, ahs? Thank you. And the next item I have, we request that we table the sidewalk cafe and with Jerry Gilchrist's wedding restaurant, 70 Dexter Street, put the promotion to table. I have a motion by Councilwoman Fonteza, and a second by Councilman Arcaza to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Do you have votes aye, nays, ahs? Now I need to jump to the department heads.
Are we going to continue 7B?
I'd like to go to the
There is a 7B2, which is the hearing on the license.
I think, I think we'll stick to the department heads. Yeah.
I'm going to have questions.
Yeah, I know. The department heads. Councilman said you better send out for lunch.
Licenses first.
Okay.
Okay, advertised hearing in consideration of the features of the alcohol hall is very rich. Class B vitroling license for restaurant, Monte Teresto, LLC, 804 Broad Street.
Now we open the public hearing. Good evening. How are you?
My name is Samuel Lawrence, the Congress Governor.
First question I have is asked Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Is there a license available? And after reviewing and counting a number of times this week, we have come to the conclusion that yes, there is a B vitroling available.
And if I could clarify, Monte Teresto is actually a holder of a B limited license, and they're requesting to switch to
Upgrade from B limited to B vitroling?
Correct.
What is your current hours of operation? What time do you fill?
Our week will be to about 1:00 P.M.
The obligation is to 10:00 P.M.
To 10:00, that's why I say I, it is a restaurant. I don't see any point why you should go to 1:00.
I ask in a city for last, last two months ago, which I like, two months ago.
As a restaurant, but B limited, beer and wine, now you're looking for a full-blown license or something like that. I have some concerns with that.
Okay, so we're going to fix them, you know, like say, asking in a city, and they say, if you get the liquor, I mean, the wine and beer, I can go to 1:00.
They told you, they told you if what? If you get a BV, you can open to 1?
Yeah.
Who told you that? I have, yeah, but we, no, we can set the hours. There's nothing in the ordinance says a BV carries a 1:00 P.M. license. I don't know where anyone saw that.
Mr. Chairman.
The B limited is 10:00 P.M. So if he gets a BV, he wants to open just, just Sundays to 1? Not all week? I have some concerns. What's the advantage of that? Do you think business will increase from 10:00 P.M. to 1:00 P.M.?
Well, yeah, we can, I know, because I, actually, I applied, like, last month, I applied for an entertainment license for two karaoke, you know that?
I will hear. Karaoke there. We have entertainment.
Till 10:00 P.M.
No, that's why we put it to 1.
I see 10:00 P.M. What's the advantage of wanting a full-blown liquor license as opposed to beer and wine? Yeah, I'll get back to it. Any Councilwoman?
As part of the application process, one of the questions is what is the law enforcement track record of the applicant or the establishment? So if possible, could we have the Colonel, if you're able to speak on it now, speak on this business owner and restaurant? Any pass issues, any, or the fire department as well, you might have to call there.
General James, please chief. I, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to speak on that. I was able to do some research on it. Off the top of my head, though, to be honest with you, I am not aware of anything that occurred. I have no really concerns that I can speak of. But to go more in depth, I would have to take the time to research our recognition system, but I, I'm not aware of anything right now I can divulge to you. Prohibit them from expanding on the current liquor license obligations.
Good evening, Councilors. Chief Bradley from the Fire Department. The same as the Colonel, we have that, no problems whatsoever with this establishment. We actually did go in, they did do their annual liquor license inspection, which was done with everybody else, and we went in and did a second inspection, corrected a couple of minor issues that needed to be corrected, and they had no problem. The building is meeting all fire codes. As far as the fire department is concerned, we don't have a problem with this whatsoever.
Anyone else?
I would just ask Madam Clerk, if you would speak to me. When you guys did the research on the licenses, how many do we have out right now? And is this our last one, or how many are available?
This would be the 24th. We have 25 available.
So there would be one lot in a BV, and then with the release of this B limited, there would be one available at the B limited level.
Also, a couple of things. So right now, what time do you close the restaurant?
Right now, we close at
10:00 P.M.
Just during the night.
And you got the entertainment just for the weekends, correct?
Yes.
Okay, if you got this license, you would be closed at 10:00 P.M. during the week, correct?
Yeah.
And what nights would you be, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday only to 1?
Well, if I can, Fridays, Friday, Saturday.
See, now you're adding Friday. That's my point. Now, let me finish, please. Also, you cannot sell beer prior to noon time on Sunday. So you open a restaurant at 11:00 on Sunday?
I open by 9:00, uh, 10:00.
You cannot sell liquor prior to 12:00 noon on Sunday. Are you aware of that? I know, I know, Michael Lawrence. Don't mess with me, Michael Lawrence. Councilwoman Fonteza.
Just as a form of clarification, the city clerk, maybe you can tell, what are the hours currently?
Like, they're no
I don't remember. I mean, in detail, I don't have their
Because I think, I think they're already open to 1.
Yes, there's a restaurant, they're allowed to open.
We're not saying whether they're allowed. I'm asking whether they're currently open till 10:00. That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying what
Oh, but I'm answering your question as to what they're always are.
We're not violating any laws if we put restrictions. And I think the city solicitor will verify that. We are the licensing board. We can put the hours down. That's all. I'm just asking, open till 10:00 during the week. If you got this BV, you'd be open Saturday and Sunday to 1, correct? You sure on Fridays?
I move to approve this.
Wait, we're still under discussion.
There's no discussion because there's no motion.
We're still talking. We're still talking.
There has to be a motion.
I mean, the business in the city, they try to increase businesses again and do. And if they have any problem whatsoever within the year, I think...
We should have denied this, the liquor store right here, let this open up. That's what we should have denied this store.
Also, I think, I went a couple of times over there. I see they also have a civilian cameras and so like they have any issues over there, so I think...
You didn't have liquor before twelve, did you, actually?
No, I'm not telling you.
You have a motion, right? Second, councilman Solano, second, right, councilman. Any further discussion? Mr. Liddell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, sometimes we over-restrict things. I think that the BV licenses in the city are all under constant review by us and the police and the fire. If they acted properly or in questions of violation, they are then subject to being brought before the council, the liquor board, for consideration of the hearing. I'm sure that they do not want to do that. But we also have to allow businesses the right to operate and make a living. I understand your concern, Mr. Chairman, regarding restrictions on liquor establishments. You've always been in that vein. But I particularly would rather see the licensees allowed to operate according to law. If they do violate that trust that we give them, then we can always bring them back before us. So I would approve, I would also agree with the motion to grant them the license according to what's allowed by law. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just wanted to know, so your hours are gonna be what? Do we pinpoint it out? Are you going to one, are you trying to go to one AM every night? Or just Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Just Friday and Sunday.
Okay, so can we stipulate that on your license, on your... Anyone else? Local vote?
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Oviedo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Councilman Perry, just a minute.
Let the end, let the end of the week, so Friday, Saturday and Sunday. No liquor Friday at noon time on Sunday, right? As this will be said, you have your time.
I'll be there at like fifty-nine on Sunday.
I'll be sitting there in a car.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Binoculars in the background.
You can see me tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, man.
All right, the final one in the section of the region special committee. The use of new purpose for Tabernacle El Nuevo of... Correct.
Hi. You've, you've been here, this is third or fourth year, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't think there's been any problems. You got music?
Yes.
Can I just add, what is it, or what is, what is even?
It's a special event where we bring somebody from a church, speak the word of God. We need to put away clothes, clothes, and just spend some time with the community.
So we, so we...
Yes.
And you guys do clean at that?
Yes.
I'm hope to approve the special permit for the use of James Scott for cyber. I'm sorry, wait.
Second.
And a motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, second by councilman Figueroa. Any further discussion? Best of luck, and I hope it don't rain, it hasn't rained here in a few years.
Thank you.
All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have aye, nay, ayes. Thank you.
We're back up to page one. Item five, the communication department officials from Mayor James Yosa, the fire agent. Probably seventeen is for people stay.
So we see, thank you.
Item B, Department Financial Reports.
Council members, any... Pass the head that do, have a question with Jerry Ford.
Mr. Chairman. Can I ask to chief, please, please, chief? Good evening, chief. Chief, uh... There's a couple of things that have happened over the last few weeks. I just want to go over with you. What is going on? A month or so ago...
Councilman, this is the financial report.
It's your report. Anything on your report to police department? That's, we're questioning the police department.
Basically, we do the financial portion.
But it's, it's, it's the police reporting to us, Mr. Chairman. So this is the opportunity that we can have to ask questions of that department.
If you're reading, Mr. Liddell, financial reports. It's financial reports. It's not fair to the department that's probably not prepared to answer any problems or whatever. Read the topic, it's financial reports. I'm sure if you have any questions regarding things going on in the city, you can make arrangements with the Colonel or email, whatever. Financial reports.
Mr. Chairman, then, what opportunity does a councilman have to ask the department, which we have normally done in the past, questions of each respective department when it comes up? I asked him to ask, Mr. Chairman, that under new business, that you allow items to be placed under new business, but I have not been allowed to do that.
I'm sure you can make arrangements with any department head in this building too, or at the highway or the police or fire department to speak with them. Now again, it's not on the agenda, Tom, it's financial reports.
Okay, if you're not gonna allow me to ask questions, then I'll ask questions.
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Liddell.
Mr., Mr. President, in the past, the...
We're not in the past.
Okay.
We live in the present.
Then I would request, Mr. Chairman, that on the agendas in the future, that each department be listed so that we can question each department on the operation of that department. Otherwise, we do not have an opportunity. So I would ask that every meeting, they be listed on the agenda, besides financial report, a report from the department. And so we may ask questions of any items that come up, such as arrests of individuals who have graffiti, buildings, what action was taking place? Did we receive any fines or action taken by them? Individuals who may have been arrested for shootings or other violations? How would they list it?
Chief Executive Board.
Yep, and if the chief could comment on those issues of graffiti in the past? Because I have a problem with individuals with graffiti.
Again, this is financial report. Any, any questions of finances with the...
Yes.
With finances with the...
Have we finalized or fined any individuals for graffiti?
That's not a financial...
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. It's one of his, any offenses, Mr. Chairman.
Your Colonel, I, I would hope now that you'd be courteous and ask, and ask to meet with the Colonel at some point.
I would kindly ask to get any questions regarding any arrests we have. We arrest between fifteen, sixteen, seventy hundred people a year. I would not have the detailed information for any individual that we arrested. You have specific information, you contact me, I'd be more than happy to press information to you or any other member of the council. Thank you.
I would do that, yeah.
Anyone else with any department head? With that, look for a motion.
Finance Department?
Isaiah Lenmo Ganas, AFO for the City of Central Falls. I had asked and had a conversation with the council president due to the recent change of the finance director. And the fact that we're gonna have budget workshops next week, I am not prepared to talk in detail about the financial package for March and March. I get the general, so if you have a general question, I may be able to answer.
Mr. Chairman, ask why your line is a certain number?
Yes.
I could, I do not have that answer off the top of my head.
Due to that, uh, due to that, Mr. Chairman, I asked that the finance director be present to answer questions as I have in the past, answer questions on the budget. I also asked for a public meeting, which I have in the past, regarding the order report, because the city council still has not been allowed to question items in the order report. And I ask that that be put on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. That financial matters involving the city be allowed to be discussed by the city council and questions be given to the finance director, to the AFO, to the mayor, whoever is permitted to answer these questions, Mr. Chairman. Since I've taken office, I've requested at least a public discussion and a public, an allowance of the public to ask questions. I've been asked by my constituents to allow them to have a public meeting, to ask questions. And I'm doing that, Mr. Chairman. I request that on the next agenda, as I stated, that a public meeting be allowed to ask questions regarding the order report and the finances of the city. I would also include, Mr. Chairman, as I have earlier in the meeting and I have for the last few meetings, that any discussions that I make be included directly in the minutes. That my questions be provided, not skipped over, Mr. Chairman, that all my comments be included in the minutes. I ask that at this time, Mr. Chairman. Since Mr. Ganas is not able to...
I think he answered it fully, I think he...
Move to the next, for the next meeting.
I think what you're basically requesting, then we hire us to...
No, not at all, Mr. Chairman. Not at all, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else, any department heads?
Like I said, it's gonna be budget workshops, that would be called the meetings over the, for the budget, probably next week. You'll get a calendar and an email and a notification over the next week or two. As of now, the budget will be scheduled to be presented to the public on May fifteenth. And after that, there'll be public meetings. And that schedule is being...
Thank you. Looking for a motion to... Looking for a motion to receive and approve the Department financial report. Have a motion. Councilman Figueroa, we have a second. We have a second, by Councilwoman Rivera. So we see, all those who favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, nay, ayes, ayes. Thank you.
Item six is scheduled bills. Hearing consideration.
Make note, councilman Azir voted president on the financial reports of the department.
Scheduled bills, hearing consideration and all consideration of following commercial ordinance, lending, non-utilization tax ordinance. This is fresh reading.
We open a public hearing regarding this item.
Does anyone sign this president?
I don't know, there's something... Put the promotion to approve a first reading, first passage of the ordinance permitting to be non-utilization tax ordinance.
I'm hope to approve first reading.
And motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, second by Councilman Acosta. Any discussion? Local vote?
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Oviedo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Councilman Perry, just a minute.
Thank you.
Item B is an ordinance permitting the economic expansion incentive program.
Also, local head.
We also do not have anyone sign up at all, sir. Put the motion, Mr. President.
I make a motion to amend the economic...
Mrs. President, we have a survey in front of you, help us, audience.
We have motion by Councilman Solano.
I'm sorry, forward the...
You didn't make a motion till then, though.
Who made the motion?
Aye. Councilman?
To prove?
To prove?
To prove.
What would you, what is your motion, uh, Mr. Solano, to amend?
To prove.
To prove? So you're back, back off, back off the approval one, okay?
Back off the approval, and I make the motion to amend, and thank you.
We have a motion to amend such an ordinance, we have a second.
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Fonseca. Discussion on the amendment, I think the attorneys will have filled it.
So this, this is the city's administrative tax stabilization program, which the city was bringing in to compliance with the Commerce RI program so that the city was eligible for reimbursement from the state up to twenty percent of the cost, the city gets reimbursed. The specific amendment before you is on page three, and it's subsection two. What this does is, there's a twelve-year table from year one to year twelve on the improvement of the building. So let's say if a building is worth a hundred thousand dollars and they were making twenty thousand dollars' worth of improvements, they wouldn't pay taxes on the twenty percent, on the twenty thousand dollar improvements in year one, and then it would slowly staircase up until year twelve, they're paying a hundred percent of the taxes on just that twenty thousand dollars of improvements. This amendment would allow, if the planning director and the finance director both give their joint approval, to change those percentages. So currently, it's one hundred seventy-five, fifty, 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 twenty-five, 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 ten, ten. This would provide some flexibility, so long as year one is one hundred percent and so long as year twelve is ten percent in financing. So it essentially would allow the city to have flexibility with the twelve-year staircase, but in compliance with Commerce RI, it's twelve years, it starts at one hundred and ends at ten.
Anyone with discussion, councilman?
Just like to ask the solicitor, how do they arrive to the twelve-year step? There's no real standard for this. The state law gives us guidance to the extent that we can't give a city tax stabilization for more than twenty years. But anything zero to twenty is, we're allowed to do. Twelve has become the standard in the industry just because of financing packages and what developers have come to expect from cities. But other than, than we can't do more than twenty, there's no real reason why they're even allowed.
Anyone else, any further discussion? If you want to understand what the solicitor just... If you want to understand what the solicitor just told. Lo Corvo on the amendment.
Councilman Ferri?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Oviedo?
Mr. Chairman, in all due abundance of caution, I abstain from this.
You abstain? Are you refusing?
I abstain because I'm not sure if I may have a conflict, so I abstain from voting on this.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, we're looking to move first passage as an amendment.
I'm looking to approve the ordinance amending the economic expansion incentive program.
Second. We have a motion by councilman Fonseca, second by councilman Solano to move first passage of said ordinance. Any discussion? Lo Corvo?
Councilman Ferri?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Oviedo?
Again, I wish to be recorded as abstaining on this.
Councilman Oviedo?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I received an ordinance creating the Bethesda Central Falls Station District Joint Planning Committee. Is that a second?
Second.
Color hearing?
We open a color hearing and any more?
Here is no signature. No one sign up?
Mr. Motion.
I'm looking to approve the, yes, through the Bethesda Central Falls Joint Station Planning Committee.
Second, motion by councilman Fonseca, second by councilman Figueroa and councilman Solano. Discussion on the motion. So is it?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask which council member serves on this joint planning commission?
I don't believe we have any.
Okay. Could you inform the mayor?
The former mayor, what?
The council president is the Bethesda Central Falls Planning Committee of the city and the Bethesda Central Falls Planning Committee.
Normally, there's a, say, council member who's appointed.
Now, this is newly created. It's not required.
I don't know. I usually.
Again, it's not required. The same thing, you wanted to know about council members sitting on a finance, it's not in the charter. It's not required. In fact, this is actually something new. This has never been done in the past. We've never had a Bethesda Central Falls railroad going through, unless you remember way back, but this is a newly created, a long rail, Bethesda Central Falls.
So there is no council representative on this ordinance? Mr. Solicitor?
No.
It says it right here, composition. The commission shall consist of the members of the Bethesda Planning Commission and the Bethesda Central Falls Planning Board. That's it.
I'm asking for the solicitor.
It's an ordinance.
Separation of powers would, would dictate that legislative members should not serve on the executive boards and commissions. It was outlawed around the constitution. Someone was voted for separation of powers. Whether it's applicable to a city is probably an open legal question, but for purposes of this ordinance, the ordinance creates a joint commission composed of currently existing planning board members from both cities. No, no one's finished yet.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Any further discussion? Lo Corvo?
Councilman Ferri?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yeah.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Oviedo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next slide.
Next item is an ordinance creating the Central Falls Newton's Task Force and amending city ordinances relative to Newton's properties. Introduction?
So introduced.
Item C, resolution of the city council supporting Blackstone Valley advocacy centers lists victims of crime as a serious punishment.
Is everyone familiar? I believe this is also in the country with the.
That's right.
Yes. This is, we did this last year. Perhaps we go back two years. I'm not sure. It's a positive thing. I don't know if it's true.
Do you wish?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I have to reapply for this grant every year. We try to get as much support as possible. I submitted a letter, the mayor has submitted a legislation, also Smith's letter, the Pichu, all trying to get support. Yes, that's probably one of the biggest problems we have in the city. I think I've mentioned before the council before, you know, we have a full-time domestic violence, central assault advocate, working even at the police department. We are also working with Lincoln and coming up with a line, ensuring the work is actually needed, done here in Central Falls. It's going to take a longer period of time for me to get an idea of the impact, but I can tell you, I can assure you that for being here, working with us, the fact that you're bilingual is very helpful, I'd say, and is helping dramatically with prosecuting our cases and hopefully at some point in time will show a reduction of the domestic violence that's occurring in our city. Because right now, you're more likely for a female to be a victim of a crime in her own home than they are in the streets of Central Falls. And that's, that's sad. And so that needs to be a priority and it's a priority that I've taken on as well as standing before you ask for your support and consideration.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion by councilman Acosta, second by councilman Fonseca, councilman Solano. All of the papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays? Aye, savvish. So fast.
Item G is a resolution of the Central Falls City Council. Hold on. Hold your tab. Councilman Rivera?
So I'm asking the council to support the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council with this hotel, hotel tax so that we can keep the same rate. This is how much of their funding comes from and we're just asking to support for the next year. I'm hoping that for sometime next year, we'll be moving into the city and this benefits us now anyway because a lot of the visitors that come are sure to come to our restaurant.
So it might be a big hotel, country or.
Well, maybe benefits.
You want to tear down my house?
Yeah. Right behind.
I'm looking to approve the resolution.
Say that again.
We have a motion by councilman Fonseca, second by councilman Figueroa, and councilman Solano. Any discussion?
Yeah. I just, I have a question. Is there anybody from the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council here? I only ask, I don't know if you have the context, um, councilman, but just because I realize that this is part of how the state breaks this up. So I wonder what their long-term sustainability plan is, given that it is about to expire this year. And so are we going to have to do it kind of like this where we're submitting every year a resolution for this or do they have other plans?
This is only for one year until two thousand and eighteen. I'm going to fire him.
Councilman, you know. Thank you.
So this will be only for the upcoming year from June of this year until July of this year until next year. I don't know what the, if they have a long plan.
It's a budget article, the state budget, so it's reviewing.
Mr. Chairman, presently, the hotel tax provides how much reimbursement to the city? It's a thirty-five thousand or something I read. I'm not sure. Do you have the figures?
We don't even get, we don't have a hotel. That way.
He, he gets to the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council, they get a reimbursement. And my understanding is if they relocate here, that would still come to them, but I believe the reimbursement rate is something, it sticks in my mind, thirty-five thousand per thousand or a hundred or, I'm not sure, there is a tax, so we get a portion of their tax.
For the city of Central Falls? No.
Blackstone Valley Tourism.
Twenty-seven percent of the Central Falls sales.
In that area.
Go through the council. This is a good thing. Any further discussion? All of the papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Nay.
Aye, savvish.
Item A, is the President of the Council, the Council on Condolences and Congratulations. You only have one on the agenda. It was the President of the Council, who is right now the Director of Perez.
That, that has been done and left at the wait.
Mr. Chairman?
With that, in my view, we, councilman Fonseca and rightfully so, as that's for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lizer?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd only remind the chair that I did request items to be placed on the agenda, resolutions to be included, and Mr. Perez was one resolution I requested last week also, but I had requested other resolutions and other items to be placed on the agenda and they are not on the agenda. I raise that concern, Mr. Chairman, to you again. This is the only, this is not the only time that I've made requests that have not been placed on the agenda.
I, I, I'm not going to win that, but I review your request. Most of your requests, and all of the things that were there, was requests of a department head, the mayor, human resources. These are things, we're not, this is not part of our purview as city council members. Once again, if you have a request, for example, of H. Charles or even the mayor, put it right and get it to the mayor.
I have.
It's not coming through the council.
I have. It was CC'd on my letter.
Yeah, so you're making it sound like you're being denied at a council meeting of these requests.
I requested other condolences, Mr. Chairman.
You're a council member, you can request for the department heads or whatever. And then you had a couple of resolutions that were actually outdated. You had one regarding, I believe, the Armenian crisis years ago. It was outdated when I received it. So, you know, why come forth with a resolution that's outdated? Also, again, and I've said this, any condolences is signed by the city clerk, myself, and men out. It's from the city council. It says right on, it's from the city council, not from councilman Ferri or councilman Azir. It's from the entire city council. It's a general, I don't know. Ask the clerk, they'll show you a copy. So that's what I deliver. Unfortunately, I, I have to deliver it sometime that way. But it's, it's a condolence for the entire city council. So again, I'm not going to get into it, but what difference does it make whose name it's from the entire city council. But I, I did review your requests and most of them were not even for the city council. They're requests of individuals.
Mr. Chairman, when you're finished, I'd like to address.
Yeah, quickly because, yeah, yeah, and I agree. If you want to bring something good under good and welfare, that would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, as I stated, as I sent you this meeting and last meeting, now one of my requests to be placed on the agenda, they were requests from constituents to be placed on the agenda for public meeting to discuss the roundabout on Roosevelt Avenue, which has still been denied month after month. Last meeting, I was present and I requested, the state representative, James McLaughlin, was present in requesting that a discussion be placed on the agenda regarding pensioners. I requested it also. It's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
At the roundabout, we actually had a video of the entire, we had a presentation.
I had a request for a public meeting on it.
It wasn't a public meeting.
No, it wasn't a public meeting.
Yes, it was.
It was a presentation by the plaintiff's public. The public was not allowed to ask questions.
I, I look, as a point of clarification, we're getting off the board. The next agenda item, item C.
Madam clerk.
Item C, first finding, uh, please finish for that, council. If you finish on council, we're going to have a resolution now positioned in House of fifty-four seventy-five.
So received. Thank you.
And I'll put him off.
Yes, quickly, I want to jump to, can we have an update, Matt, on the ethics training I would defer to the members of the council as to whether you would like to have a special meeting just to do that or would you prefer to have it at the end of the council meeting? That was my only question.
I don't know.
End of a, I, I, actually, I think we should pick it till after the budget is complete. All the budget here is ready.
It would be a brief overview of the city ethics ordinance and the state ethics laws and provide you a resource to follow, the private fault city and state ethics laws. Those of which I remember was an orientation, but we'll do it again.
Okay. And the other, nearly others, I think Len had answered that there will be a calendar coming out very briefly, Madam Clerk, regarding the budget workshops.
It's kind of his present.
I think we have a date for the mayor's actual presentation of the budgets, of the budget will be coming up prior, before the workshops, from what I gather, and then the workshops. I believe that that's when we do it. So I have to say. All this, so I have to say about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Good and, good and welfare.
For the good and welfare, Mr. Chairman, I ask that items submitted be allowed on the council agenda. Items of resolutions, requests for, on behalf of constituents, public meetings, discussions with department heads, these are items that my constituents have asked me to bring up before the council. I have constituents in here that want to ask questions.
Did they, Mr. Azir, did they sign up for public hearing tonight? What are your constituents for a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, it's my good and the welfare. The questions that they want to ask are not on the agenda because they've been skipped over, so they wish to specific, specify exactly what they want to discuss and have individuals present to answer those requests, Mr. Chairman. I asked a simple request that items that I feel important to the council be placed on the agenda. For the second month in a row, this month, not one of my requests were honored. Last month, mostly all of them were denied. The items that you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman, were requested last month, but they were not on last month, so unfortunately, you deemed they were outdated, so they were not for long.
You had a few out of date. I don't want to hide you.
It doesn't make a difference, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I don't think it's in our purview to discuss, you, human resource questions, you had questions of the mayor. This is not our purview, though.
And let the mayor answer those questions.
But that's.
I did. I've asked him to answer the questions that I submitted. Other items I requested a public meeting on it.
Anyone else?
And these are the items.
This is good and welfare. This is more criticism. This is not criticism and welfare.
Also, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned finance committee. The city council has a finance committee, has always had a finance.
Again, it's not required by charter. Not required by charter.
I disagree.
We will have workshops regarding finances.
Is there, what, is there any committee of the council, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Which one?
I have one meeting Thursday.
What's that?
It's called the Veterans Study Committee. You want to come? Come, one o'clock.
Has it been notified? Have you listed?
Notified by who? It's a study committee. It's a, it's a study committee.
Committee of the council, Mr. Chairman, it's a public committee.
It's not a committee of the council, it's seven veterans.
Okay, it's a private.
It's seven veterans.
It's a private. Are there any public committees of the city council?
I'm not going to argue with you, Tom.
Are there any public committees of the city council?
No.
I have something.
No.
But just so to know, I had asked the entire council in general if we could have a workshop to talk about committees and nobody wanted to have that meeting. So I do have a few events. So the city is hosting the Census Job Recruitment Fair this Thursday, Friday here. And I'm also part of a group called the New Leaders Council of Rhode Island. It's a group of progressives who want change in Rhode Island. And the mayor is actually hosting it, uh, for myself and my classmates this Saturday at Takira. hosting it, along with myself and my classmates, this Saturday at Taquira, Taquira Lupitas Avenue. So if you guys want to join us, there's a lot of young progressives, and it'll be a good opportunity to meet them. I emailed you guys about Roger Williams' presentation next Monday from 6:00 to 8:00 as well, and on May 31st, you should have gotten a letter home from the high school about honors night at the high school, so that's at 6:00 p.m. And on June 2nd, we're hosting a puberty and cultural night at the high school from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., June 2nd. Oh, and graduation is June 10th at Rhode Island College, followed by the rest of it at Vans Park for the students. And everyone in here.
Is the 31st of May?
Yes, honors.
Then the 10th of June would be the?
Graduation.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I would like to, even though the public education is not here today, but now, but I want to congratulate them and the Rock for the event that they did in the city, for the Eiffel, the dreaming, also the venue that was great. A lot of people came, and also, the fashion unit was very nice.
Auburn.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I would just want to shout out and congratulate the Lions Club for the event they had.
Thank you.
Two, was it two Saturdays ago?
Yeah, we could go this past Saturday.
Yeah, we could go past Saturday, two Saturdays. It was great. Again, people physically actively engaged in the community, involved using our own space here, showing folks how you can convert an urban space into a great space for physical activity, so it's a great event. Next year, we hope to invite more people, and we'll keep building it up. You're all, you're all up for the run.
Yep, yep. Make it team, make it team.
Anyone else? Looking for a motion, Mr. President?
Of course.
Standing here now.
Mr. Chairman?
7:55.
Mr. Chairman, it doesn't have to be in a meeting, but just as a notice to all the council members, each council member is allowed by the Secretary of State's office to be a notary public for your term of office. You would go down to River Street, apply as a council member, you will receive a commission as a notary for your term of office for the next two years. So I would recommend that you do that notary division. You're allowed to become a notary and help your constituents.
Did you get your stamp already?
You can just do it online.
128 West River Street Road. No charge.